Lead is now seven, oh six forty-five, forty-six. I'd like a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
There's a second?
Second.
Roll call, vote?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Yes, yes, yes. We're in executive session. Okay, Lincoln, yours.
All right, let's just hold on for a minute for Paul.
We are in open session. We all rise to the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And as customary, we could have a moment of silence and your thoughts, I guess, think about nine eleven and the people that suffered. Before we have the swearing in, I'd like to make an announcement. There's supposed to be a concert in the park this Thursday. That'll be rescheduled for next Wednesday to fifteenth from five-thirty to seven. I guess the band is Uncommon Soul. I guess they play forty, fifty, sixties and seventies music, I don't know. And just another notation that the cultural council will be having an open house on nine sixteen from seven to eight at the Whitman Public Library, if anyone's interested. Just wanted to thank you. And next on the agenda is the swearing in of Officer Richard Belcher and Officer Christopher Especk. Is that right?
Close enough.
Close?
Yeah, close enough. Good evening. Thanks Board of Selectmen and Town Administrator Heinemann for the opportunity to introduce our two newest officers, Officer Richard Belcher and Christopher Especk. In this time of ongoing reform in the police profession, our most recent addition of Officer Belcher and Especk have been a blessing as the number of people interested in this career has dropped dramatically. It's encouraging to see that there are people who realize the difficult situations that police officers respond to but remain committed to facing the challenge. Officer Belcher and Especk are two of these officers, and we have a few in the bullpen waiting for an opportunity to open in our reserve intermittent officers as well as from the auxiliary unit. Rich Belcher is a longtime resident of Whitman and a graduate of Whitman-Hanson Regional High School in 2006. Received a certificate in criminal justice from Lincoln Technical Institute in Somerville in 2008 with a three-point-seven-five GPA. He was appointed as a reserve intermittent officer in September of 2017 and appointed as a full-time officer in November of 2020. He recently graduated the Cape Cod Municipal Police Academy, has completed his field training, and has been assigned to a permanent shift. It's time, come on up, Rich. Town Clerk Don Vally's going to swear.
Do you mind? We actually have a student. He's here. All right, you want to turn and face me and raise your right hand, sir. I, Richard F. Belcher.
I, Richard F. Belcher.
Promise to uphold the Constitution of the United States.
Promise to uphold the Constitution of the United States.
The laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
The laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And the bylaws of the town of Whitman.
And the bylaws of the town of Whitman.
I promise to bring to my profession.
I promise to bring to my profession.
A standard of quality and integrity.
Standard of quality and integrity.
So that the conduct of my affairs of my office.
So the conduct of my affairs of my office.
Shall be above reproach.
Shall be above approach.
And merit public confidence.
And merit public confidence.
In the position of patrolman.
In the position of patrolman.
I promise to uphold such laws and bylaws.
I promise to uphold such laws and bylaws.
To which the office of patrolman may be subject, sorry.
To which the office of patrolman may be subject.
Good. I, Richard F. Belcher.
I, Richard F. Belcher.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will perform the duties incumbent upon me.
To perform the duties incumbent upon me.
As a patrolman.
As a patrolman.
For the town of Whitman.
For the town of Whitman.
In good faith.
In good faith.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
We should part two. Chris Especk is also a Whitman resident. He graduated from Cardinal Spelman High School in 2007 and received his Bachelor of Arts degree at Stonehill College in 2011. He was also appointed as a reserve intermittent officer in September of 2017 while he was employed as a court officer at Taunton District Court. He was appointed a full-time officer in March of this year. He graduated from the Plymouth Police Academy 70th Recruit Officers Class on July 23rd and received the top academic award with a ninety-eight-point-three-three average. Chris is currently undergoing field training before being assigned to a permanent shift. Come on up, Chris.
You don't mind, do you?
No.
Need to raise your right hand, Christopher, please. I, Christopher J. Especk.
I, Christopher J. Especk.
Promise to uphold the Constitution of the United States.
Promise to uphold the Constitution of the United States.
The laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
The laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And the bylaws of the town of Whitman.
And the bylaws of the town of Whitman.
I promise to bring to my profession a standard of quality.
I promise to bring to my profession a standard of quality.
And integrity.
And integrity.
So that the conduct of my affairs.
So that the conduct of my affairs.
Of my office.
Of my office.
Shall be above reproach.
Shall be above reproach.
And merit public confidence.
And merit public confidence.
In the position of patrolman.
In the position of patrolman.
I promise to uphold such laws and bylaws.
I promise to uphold such laws and bylaws.
To which the office of patrolman may be subject.
To which the office of patrolman may be subject.
I, Christopher J. Especk.
I, Christopher J. Especk.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will perform the duties incumbent upon me.
That I will perform the duties incumbent upon me.
As patrolman for the town of Whitman.
As patrolman for the town of Whitman.
In good faith.
In good faith.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Normally, we always come around and shake hands, but we're having a film, so we're kind of buried off, so thank you very much. Welcome to the town of Whitman, as far as being on our police department. I'm glad to see that you're Whitman residents. I like that idea, so thank you very much. And congratulations, and the main thing is stay safe, please.
Good luck.
Good luck. Excellent. If you'd like to link, you can, that's it, right? You don't have to stick around. They might have wanted to, but yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Okay, we're getting into new business now. Next on the agenda is act on the request of Charles E. Castro to be reappointed to the position of constable for a three-year term through September 16th, 2024. Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
There's a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Act on the request of Elaine Bergeron to be appointed to the position of a member of the Historical Commission for a three-year term through June 30th, 2022 in honor of the fill in existing vacancy. If approved, take action to rescind the appointment of Elaine Bergeron for the position of associate member of the Historical Commission effective immediately. Do I hear a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next is act on the request of Marina Mario on behalf of the Southeastern Philharmonic Orchestra for permission to use the Town Hall Auditorium for the purpose of conducting a free concert on Sunday, December 5th, 2021, and Sunday, April 24th, 2022. Do I hear a motion?
So moved. Second.
And I'm very happy that they're coming back. It's a great concert.
Yeah.
Actually, outstanding. All in favor?
Aye.
Go business. And Donna, update on the strategic plan. Okay, so we're going to start, we're going to have a video, or are you going to set it up? Is it all set?
Yeah, just, yeah, it's a PowerPoint.
Okay.
And you can either be here or if you prefer there, whatever you prefer.
Oh.
You can sit?
Yeah. And I can change it for you.
Good evening. It's nice, it's nice to see you. I've spoken with most of you. I'm trying to track down Selectman Bazanson, but I know, I know we will connect. And so tonight, I just wanted to give you an update as to where we are with the strategic planning process. So if we could just go to the first slide, Lincoln, that would be great. Just to refresh your, you know, everyone's memory, it's been a while, but I just wanted to kind of highlight some of the key themes about what the strategic planning process is. And so it really is about, it's an activity that really sets high-level priorities and an alignment amongst all departments and throughout an organization, throughout the town. So everyone, and I like to think of it as rowing in the same direction, and so we're looking at the same, like, goalposts, if you will. And it's really about having a common understanding and agreement about what those outcomes are and what those goals are. And to also, and it's, it's about long-term planning, and it's not, what it isn't is like telling people how to do their jobs, but it's really coming together and agreeing that these are the pillars of the themes of what we want to pursue as a town. These are our values, and it brings us all together. And so whatever we do individually, it's all contributing to that overall mission, vision, vision, and values statement. So next, next slide, please. So I just wanted to show you where we are. There's three phases, if you remember, of the strategic planning process. And the first one is really the most, I would say, like, it's the longest part of the process. Because really, part of it is really getting our facts together. It's very hard to do planning if we don't have a common understanding of what the facts are. And the facts come from looking at existing data sources that I've been reviewing. It's identifying other things that are happening around us that we need to consider, like, for example, like COVID-19, and how does that impact how we do business? And all the other, you know, sort of ripple effect of COVID-19 on the economy, on housing, on work, et cetera. It's looking at and thinking about, well, how other municipalities thought about strategic planning? Because sometimes it's really, it's very helpful to get some ideas and insights from other communities, whether they be in Massachusetts or nationally. And then the, the part that's been, for me, the most, I guess, interesting and productive, I feel, is really talking to the various stakeholders that are part of the planning process. And so part of that is the information from the citizens, from the community surveys, extremely valuable in this process as a, you know, kind of as a, as a touchstone. The conversations that I've had with the Selectmen, the conversations that I've had with the department heads, and with the Whitman representatives of the school committee, and then, of course, the town administrator and the superintendent. So this has been, I'm almost complete with that process, and I'll give you more of an in-depth update in a second. The second phase of this really is, once we have our fact base, I, you know, I really tried to synthesize all of the information and data that I have reviewed, including the conversations and rich input from everyone who's been involved in this planning process. And so part of that is to really come together and for people to sort of have the same fact base, if that makes sense, and then really have a strategic planning exercise where we take that fact base, and I say "we" because it's a very participatory process, and really begin to identify together mission, vision, values, you know, what are the key strategic areas that we want to focus on as a town? And then really thinking about what are those, of what we're going to measure? You know, how do we know we're, we're advancing the ball up the field? How are we going to sort of identify what that progress is in the short, medium, and long term? And then the other thing, and it's like resources required, resources includes the people or individuals and departments, that everyone's got a role to play, because these overarching goals are big enough that everyone, every department, you know, has a role to play in sort of advancing it. So if we can go to the next slide, because I, you know, I will, I just wanted to kind of focus, come back to Phase One, and the third part of that, just, you know, is really putting the plan together and writing it. So Phase One, so this is what I've been involved with, with all of you. And so, you know, one was, I mentioned the background research on existing reports and getting insights into how the town is organized, the department head interviews, you know, Board of Selectmen, the school committee members, and then I mentioned the comparative benchmarking of other municipalities' plans. I've conducted, I've completed 24 interviews so far, and that's, it's been great because people have been so responsive, and that's for me like kind of a record in terms of in the, like, the timeframe to be able to get everybody. So, and that's the 14 department heads, the town administrators, I mentioned the school superintendent, four of you so far, and four members of the school committee. So next slide. Thank you. So as I mentioned, the strategic planning retreat, you know, like, how does that happen? What does that, what does that look like? So the idea is to have a day-long retreat, and I know that sounds like a big room, but it's probably going to be on a weekend. And Lincoln and I have talked a little bit about identifying, you know, some dates that are, that folks are available. And it would be open, you know, to the public to observe. And so, and part of it is to really, as I said, you know, we would talk about, you know, mission, vision, and values. We would define those priorities over five years. And then coming out of that, it's sort of, you think of it as kind of a flow document, then comes out of goals, objectives, and performance measures. You know, within those larger categories, again, I want to say, these are the themes, you know? So for example, a theme could be economic development. It could be transport, it could be infrastructure investment. It could be culture. And if you were to see a variety of, as I have a lot of municipalities, it's really interesting to see where, where towns and cities have focused their strategic priorities. There's no one size that fits all, and it's going to be very unique to the town of Whitman. And so, and then we look at those strategic opportunities and we evaluate, you know, we ask ourselves these questions. Are, are these priorities consistent, and do they respond to, like, our vision, our values? And, you know, we come back to the first part of the exercise. It's a bit of a litmus test, because we're always asking ourselves that. It's always about the mission. And also keeps us from sort of what I would like to describe as like scope creep, you know, because you can't have goals if they seem like they're, they're too expansive that you really can't achieve them. But so that roots us in sort of the practicality of advancing our goals. And then we would, we would begin to look at, you know, what are the, the investments required? And that might be a second part following the retreat in terms of looking at, you know, utilization of current assets, current budget, staffing, and then thinking, well, if we wanted, that's when we make some decisions, right? It's sort of, well, if we've said this as a priority, what might be some tools that we might use, or how might we think about implementing that? So sometimes that can happen during a strategic planning retreat if we got the right expertise around the table, which I think we will, and sometimes that happens after the retreat. So that's what would happen. One of the questions I have is, well, how does that, you know, gee, like, this image of all these people coming together or a group and really getting through an agenda that has to accomplish those things? And it's really the design of the meeting to, like, to facilitate, you know, each piece of this. So ideas are shared that oftentimes there's, people work in teams. I call them interdisciplinary teams, because the, the best outcomes are when you bring people who have different expertise and perspectives together to respond to particular questions. And then we kind of, we break out and we come together, and we break out to come together, but we, but during that process, we are deliberating on what those priorities are, if that makes sense. So it actually works. You have to sort of, as I say, trust the process, but I've found that by the end of the agenda, I always say, well, did we accomplish it? And that, for me, is the feedback. And if the answer, if people say, yeah, we didn't think we were going to be able to do that, that's, that's a great outcome. So the next slide? And then I just want to say, the final strategic plan really is, captures all of that. It's not meant to be what I call a tome or a giant document that sits on a shelf and you say, oh, yeah, we did a strategic plan five years ago, and, you know, well, I guess it's time to do one, but we never really looked at it. It's only good if it really is something, is a document, a tool, that allows people to have a conversation. I, you know, I mentioned to Lincoln, it was, I watched the last, the last Selectmen's meeting, and Lincoln was talking about his goals. And what's interesting is that, in a sense, if you can imagine an overlay, a framework, that, that, that the goals of the town administrator, who or whomever, always in some way respond to the overarching goals of that five-year strategic plan, if that makes sense. So everything fits some place within the plan. So it's really, it's an implementation roadmap, as I say. And then, then it's a tool, and it can be very simple, it doesn't have to be complicated, the simpler tools are the best, to really track and monitor and evaluate what are the key indicators that we want to look at to say, are we making progress? Because what's the use of having a plan if you don't really know how you're doing? And then, and then also, not just to, into, as I like to think of it, it's a tool also to identify opportunities for course correction before you're in the, you know, you're into the problem, right? So if you're, if you're using it, you can actually say, gee, we thought we would be here by now, but this is why it's not happening, and collectively, how do we think about addressing that? So it's a, it's a tool, it's a tool to communicate. It's interesting that the school committee, you know, recently, and if you, you know, you've probably had a chance to look at it, is they did a strategic plan. And what's interesting is that they have, you know, very, you know, it's very complicated because it's a very complicated organization, and, but they have these sort of, if you look at it, it's sort of a high-level key indicators, in particular strategic areas that have identified, it's the same idea. And they all, you know, they might look a little bit different, but it's always the same idea. So next slide. So, so next steps, I'm finishing up my interviews and pulling together and summarizing, as, when I talk to people, I always say that I'm not quoting you, I'm taking themes, and it's really interesting to see where there's, you hear themes that, the patterns, like, you start hearing patterns, you start seeing like, gee, many people saw this as like an opportunity. Many people thought of this as like a challenge. Many people think of this as something that we need to keep an eye on. So I will, you know, sort of summarizing those conversations. And then also pull together that other data, so we have our fact base, and my job is to kind of present it in a way so that the, you know, sort of the learned body of planners can come together and use that data to inform those kinds of strategic discussions. And so we're looking to identify a date for a strategic planning retreat, hopefully
When you, I have a question. When you say a retreat, are you thinking about, like, having something like in our main hall downstairs?
Yeah, sure, absolutely. That's what I was thinking.
Are you saying the public, the public is invited?
Yes, absolutely.
So it would either, how long would you say this session would last?
Generally, I would say, hmm, at the, you know, the, the least, I'd say, I'd say six hours.
How much? Six?
I know it sounds like that sort of, six hours, there'd be breaks.
Well, then it seems like, if you're going to do that, the best time to do it would be like on a Saturday.
Yes.
Right?
Indeed.
Open all day, and, and we have in our town hall. And you're saying, what month, October?
Mm-hmm, if that's possible.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, we were, we were thinking about either the ninth, or the 16th, or the 23rd, I think.
Mm-hmm.
I think any of those dates make sense, but, and, you know, I think we definitely wanted to get a sense of the, from the board about what day you'd like to do it. Ann and I had.
You can get back to me on that.
Yeah.
You don't have to, you know.
But, but Ann and I had also, Ann suggested, and I, I think it's a good idea to have the possibility of including the Whitman members of the school committee.
Yes.
But certainly, I think your folks' schedule is paramount, and then we can see, you know, who can attend from, from the Whitman School Committee members as well.
So are you going to put like a memo out, a letter requesting who could attend, we'll say, Saturday, the 23rd, from what time to what time? I mean, some, I mean, you know, some people may want a, an hour break in between to go grab lunch or something like that, you know?
Mr. Chairman, just a suggestion, do you think when we're trying to get, get a feel for the date, we should either pick like the 16th and the 23rd and just see what, what is the best response?
I think if you poll the, the group that you're going to invite to this and just get the consensus of which is the better day, you're going to get more participation.
16th, I'll be in Myrtle Beach.
So probably not the 16th.
So you're going to make it to 16th?
I'll be in Myrtle Beach.
I can do any of those. The ninth is a holiday weekend, just as a heads up.
Right. And I think the 30th, we possibly get into.
Yeah.
Halloween. People with kids and events.
23rd?
When are you coming back?
If it's still, I assume it's still on, so.
I would make that suggestion, that if, you know, you do, you know, the Survey Monkey thing and get everybody.
I mean, if.
So we can tentatively, it sounds like scheduling-wise, the 23rd's the best now, and then we can reach out to the school committee members and see.
Check with Carl and the school committee members.
And Carl, obviously, yep.
I mean, if you need to do it another day, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, there's.
Think about it as some golf balls down the.
Yeah.
You can come in remotely, Mr. Chairman.
Or the first weekend in November is also.
The 6th.
Yeah.
Six.
I think I'm tentatively on call that weekend, so I can't promise I'll be here.
Oh, okay. We want you here.
I mean, I don't think we're going to be able to find a day where you can get 16, 16 people.
Yeah. Pick a date. Go with the most popular and meet them, that's about all you can do.
So like you said, we could put in a Survey Monkey or do whatever one of those is for October 9th or 23rd? Does that sound good?
Yeah.
I think everyone was available on the 9th, tentatively, now? Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'd actually, having that Monday holiday, I might like the 9th. Get an extra day.
Oh, I'm sorry, that, that's right, I forgot, that's a long day, so.
It's, I mean, it's not a problem for, I don't think, any of us right now, so.
Looking at you, the 9th or the 13th?
23rd.
Oh, 23rd, rather. I'm good both those days, so that may not be a good thing. Could be, that.
Jim, are you here for the 16th, right?
Put a feeler out there. Okay, might as well continue. Is that it?
That's, that's it, that's.
That's it, well. Does anybody have any questions?
I just have a quick one. So as far as the agenda, is that something you're going to create based on your feedback?
Yeah, so what I would do is, yeah, I would develop an agenda, you know, a very, like, detailed, you know, like timed agenda, so people have a sense of the flow. And, and I would, I would distribute that plus other materials in advance of the meeting so people are prepared.
Right.
Yeah, and what the expectations are, so.
Fantastic.
Sounds like a plan.
Great.
I guess just one last one, just in case. I guess just one last one, just in case. Have you ever done this via Zoom to, I would hate, my fear is something happens and this process comes to a stall again. So just have maybe a backup plan
Yeah.
In order that we can keep this going.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I have, I have done it during, you know, Zoom, like in person's always, you know, always, always the best if we can, even if we can do it in a, you know, a socially distant way where people aren't, I think we, I think we can, they're not, you know, there's enough space certainly downstairs to be able to do that.
Yeah, dealing with Zoom, the last school committee conference that we had was on Zoom. We had 144 people on the Zoom meeting.
Mm-hmm.
It was very difficult.
It is. Well, it's, it's hard. It's just harder to be, feel as engaged. It's just, but we, but it absolutely can happen.
All right.
Again, one quick question for you. If you're interested in having more interviews, there is a citizen at large sitting behind you that I think you should speak to if, if Mr. Kane's interested in providing some feedback. He's almost, or probably as responsible for getting this far as any of us.
Oh, okay. Great.
Sure. I'm sure you'd be glad to be interviewed.
Sure.
Why not? Your input would be valuable. Thank you. All right, Joe. Can we move on to administrators' report?
All right. Thanks, Ian.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If I could, Mr. Chairman, before then, I, I think we missed the approval of bill and payroll warrants and the acceptance of course warrants in the read file.
All right. I will go down the list and announce the meeting was, was being recorded. I like, okay, a little late. Approve, I need a motion to approve bill and payroll warrant.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? And I need a motion to accept the correspondence in the read file.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? On favor? Thank you very much. I jumped over that.
Thank you. So regarding COVID-19, I mostly just want to give the board and the members of the public who are watching a quick update. We have, I think, certainly been seeing the impact probably of, of the Delta variant in the last 14, in the 14 days prior to September 2nd. We had an uptick in positivity from 3.42% of tests to 4.79. So that's the first time that that's over 4% since a long time, back, back before, I believe in May or earlier. So we certainly are seeing the impact. You know, there is, there is a, an increase in the positivity rate. I think on the, on the positive side of things, I was looking today at some of the vaccination data. And we have had a little bit of an uptick in, from data through August 24th through August 31st in the percent of those living in Whitman, 12 and above, who are eligible to be vaccinated, who have decided to be, to be vaccinated. It's, it's a percent increase. But I think, I think it's even more interesting, I was looking at, in particular, at kids between 12 and 15, that, that's actually increased more than some of the other age groups. But there is, but even across all the age groups, there is a little bit of an uptick in vaccination rates, those who are residents who are fully vaccinated. You know, so I think that's good news. But certainly, we, as I said, we're certainly seeing the impact of, I think, what we can only assume to be the Delta variant in the increase in those positivity rates. I, you know, to that point, I did want to mention as well, you know, all along, as the board knows, we have been following the Board of Health's advice and obviously the State Department of Public Health's advice and, and the Centers for Disease, the Federal Centers for Disease Control advice, that the Board of Health has not met again since this Board of Selectmen met. But, you know, I know certainly our health inspector is keeping a close eye on all of this as well. The one thing I, I did want to bring up and, and sort of just talk explicitly about, I think it is, it seems clear to me that both in the, for public employers and private employers, it's beginning to come, I wouldn't want to say a consensus, but it's beginning to come to some sort of point where there's an increasing number of employers who are requiring vaccination for their employees with religious exemptions, you know, for firmly held religious beliefs and for those who are not able to medically. I think the board had a little bit of a sort of explicit, a little bit of a conversation about it two weeks ago, but I just wanted to bring that up explicitly. I think members of the board know this, but, you know, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts has decided to implement that for its employees, certainly the U.S. military, you know, various large private employers, a few, some other municipalities in Massachusetts. So, you know, I think that's something for the board to consider. It's not, as we talked about, it's not recommended now by the Board of Health, but I think it's something to keep in our minds as we go forward about whether or not we as a town want to set that example for our employees, you know, certainly thinking about it quite a lot and thinking about, I'm certainly not a public health expert, but in terms of coming out of this pandemic, I think the, the maximum number of folks who are able to be vaccinated and safely are, and it's compliant with their religious beliefs and medically appropriate, it seems to me like that's the way out of this pandemic. So I just more sort of wanted to put that out there explicitly.
Well, my feeling on it was we've been following the advice of the Board of Health and it seems to be working for the town. So I think I would leave it at that point and see exactly where we go with it. And if in fact, they recommend certain things and whether we agree or disagree, we have to make a decision whether or not we want to go with their advice. I don't know how the rest of the board feels.
Mr. Chairman, Lincoln, do you have any sense, I know it's the HIPAA thing and everything goes to, is there a way to sense how many employees have been vaccinated or are willing to share that information to give us a percentage sense of how these employees are, numbers fall?
We could ask for, for vaccination status. We don't know that explicitly now. Anecdotally, we know that certainly a majority, and I would guess a pretty large majority of employees are fully vaccinated.
Wouldn't the Board of Health have that? I mean, they're the ones that filled out the cards.
They do.
Right.
What I've, what I've been, what I've been told by the Board of Health folks and have had this conversation ad nauseam, I don't know about ad nauseam, but quite a bit, is that that is health protected information. So however, it is certainly something, it certainly, I'm happy to do that if the board wants to know that specifically. We can ask for vaccination, you know, we can, we can proactively ask.
It's not nobody's personal name, but.
Well, that's right. Yeah. I mean, so we could certainly go and ask, but to give you an exact number, I, the only way that I've been told I would be able to find out would be to explicitly ask each employee for whether or not they're vaccinated.
I'm not sure I'm comfortable with that, but even though I asked the question. But, I mean, what I was getting at is if, if there is a sense of it's a high percentage, we might be going down a road that we don't necessarily have to go down. And that's where I was headed with that. But I, I fully understand that it's private information and it's a personal choice. And I certainly wouldn't want to interfere with anybody's choice like that. But it would be helpful. But certainly, I would impress the issue. But.
Anybody else have any thoughts on it?
I just had a quick question. And Chief Clancy, I'm not gonna, hopefully not throwing you on the spot. But I know, you know, we, we see a percentage uptick in positivity among those test, those tested. What are we actually, if you can give us, what are we actually seeing like on the ground? What is that?
I can tell you specifically from this.
We're there.
Yeah. So when we come up with that positivity rate, and I was going to send you all an email today, we just got a little tied up with some stuff. As in the last email I sent out to the board, you got to realize we have 47 houses under quarantine. We have 55 positive cases. So where we come up with that 4.79 percentage is actually based on 1,148 tests that have been completed. So out of the 1,148 tests that have been completed, we've come back with 55 positives. That's where we come with that 4.79. How accurate is that? Well, it's accurate of the people who have been tested. We don't know if there's anybody else out there that hasn't been tested, but that's the best information we have provided to us at date to show us where we're at. I mean, we are a population of 14,5, plus or minus, that we have 55 confirmed cases. And that number has climbed, like Lincoln, Town Administrator Hammond has said, it has been the highest it's been since, I think, May-ish. So there is definitely an uptick. But there's some contributing factors that we have to look at with that, too. The availability of testing now is readily available. If you want to get tested, you can get tested. The same as the point of if you want to be vaccinated and you're above 12 years old, there are opportunities to be tested. So I think we have to take this information, digest it and look at it as a whole and see where we're at. As far as, just to touch on the knowing actually who is vaccinated in town, that falls under HIPAA. We might be able to pull a percentage number, possibly, of where we're at. But just for an example, I used when we had talked about this before, I have neighbors that are vaccinated, but will not show up on our data sheet because they were vaccinated in Florida, when they were in Florida. So there's always going to be that plus or minus on that curve. But that, that's where we stand, is the 55 in the last 14 days out of the 1,148 people tested. And we'll keep, we'll keep you up to date. That was coming in an email to you all tomorrow, but. Any other questions?
Thank you. Justin, do you have any questions or any comments?
I guess just a comment. So I, I am one of those state employees that's required to be vaccinated. HR is still working out how we're going to demonstrate that to our, our employers. But it's by October 17th, so they got to figure that out pretty soon. I, at least to me, I don't consider it a burden, although I do know some coworkers who, who are considering, you know, whether this is the end of their time with the state. So I don't want to force anyone's hand there, particularly in the town. I'd like to pursue any opportunity to, to continue to push this vaccination number higher. I know my mother works up at South Shore Hospital and was just telling me about a 31-year-old unvaccinated individual who was moved to the ICU and doesn't look good. It, it's still, it's affecting everyone now with no pre-existing conditions. So it's, I'm 31. It really resonated with her and a little bit with me. So, yeah, I just, if there's anything we can do to move this number up, whether it's consider, you know, if the Board of Health recommends a mandate or we want to go ahead as a personnel decision and do that, I don't think should take it off the table. And or if there's another incentive we could structure in to, to start moving the needle here, whether with the public at large or at least within our employees.
One other thing I wanted to mention, Chief Clancy and I were speaking about this, is the, the preliminary information seems to be that Moderna may be approved for a booster shot by the FDA towards the end of this month. We hope, I think it's fair to say, we hope. And so the chief's been working diligently and with the public health folks to put together a plan for administering booster shots when it, when it is approved. And Chief, I'm correct in saying, I think that the, we couldn't do booster shots at all until it's approved for use by, by the FDA as a booster.
Correct. So what we've done so far is we've started to secure a location. We've started planning for booster shots. The real hangup right now is for the FDA to approve Moderna, which is what we provided to the citizens of Whitman when we did our vaccination clinics. So when we get that approval, we just need to, the training is being done now. So once we get the okay to do it, we will move forward as fast as possible to get ready to start booster clinics. The tidbit of information I got today that kind of threw me, and I'll do more research on it this week, was originally, it was just going to be another dose of Moderna. Now they're talking it's going to be a percentage of a booster. So it's going to be a different dose. So that will run, we'll run into a problem then if we choose to do, we had talked about doing first boost, first shots too, as well. So if we were doing boosters and anybody from the community wanted to come in and get a booster, get their first shot, we were more than willing to do that. But that will be put on hold right now until we find out what the actual dose of the booster shot will be. But just to assure you, we are moving forward. We have our location secured for the most part. And the training is being done so that we can track it. And as soon as we get the FDA's okay, we will move forward.
Chief, before you wander off, now that the schools are back in session, have they reached out to you about running a clinic or something?
Actually, it was brought to me by the Board of Health.
Okay.
They want to reach out to the school nurse and see what the interest is there. I believe Hanson had undertaken such an action. I don't know what success they had. But we, the Board of Health is going to reach out to the school department and see what the interest is. And then we could set up, logistically, that can be difficult with kids in school during the day, parents working. So it would probably have to be an evening type thing because they're obviously minors. They'll need a legal representation there, guardian, I should say. But that has been looked into, to move forward with that as well. Once, if we get to 12 and below, who knows? We're really, it's kind of a waiting game right now to see what the FDA says for us. The big thing right now is to cross the barrier with the Moderna. Once we cross the barrier with the Moderna, we can start vaccinating like we did before with the booster shots. And I'll fill you in with more info as that comes on. But with probably a couple clinics scattered out for different time, people to meet people's schedules that we vaccinated in the past. And I'll also keep you up to date.
And when we get the shots, we bring the cards with us, right?
Correct. You'd bring the card with you and you'd just be updated for your booster. It's just all in the FDA right now. As Town Administrator said, we heard about 30 days. Let's hope. As soon as we find out, you will find out.
Thank you. Next Comcast?
So Comcast, I just wanted to inform the board. So as the board knows, the town has a franchise agreement with Comcast to provide cable services to residents. Comcast, that agreement's actually up on June 2nd of 2024. So it's a little ways out. However, Comcast did reach out to us a week and a half ago to ask to begin negotiations with that. These negotiations, as the board may know, can sometimes be quite lengthy and difficult. But I think it's good, you know, it's certainly good that they reached out to us. I'd like to, I know the town has used Bill Solomon, Attorney Bill Solomon in the past. He's really the subject expert on doing these negotiations. I think just, I would, I would reckon to say probably just about 90% of the communities in eastern Massachusetts use him. I would like to use him to help negotiate this contract. But I mostly want to make sure that the board and the public knew that that, those negotiations would be ongoing and would be using Bill Solomon unless there's an objection.
During those negotiations, will Eric from our cable studio be present? If he has any questions or is it needed?
He, he could be. I'm not sure if he has in the past. We can find out about that. I, I don't know.
I don't know.
It's, it is an agreement directly between Comcast and the town and doesn't directly involve WHCA.
Yeah.
But certainly, I don't have any objection to him being there. If he'd like to be, I'd like to know. I'm not sure if he has in the past.
Yeah. I'm not too sure if we've had in the past. Is there a question we have?
Yeah, sorry. Quick question. I just want to know if there was any consideration about municipal internet, if there was any consideration about that with, I don't know exactly how it would interrupt or affect any sort of negotiation, but if the sport has considered, you know, asking the town people if they're interested in like a municipal internet option? Like Braintree or some of those counties?
No, we haven't. And I know
What is municipal?
So municipal internet is, I know there was some gentleman on Facebook that started something about this. Unfortunately, Sean, this is another thing where it is a considerable upfront investment.
Yep.
And then you need to hope that people leave Comcast and what do you want? It's almost to the point where personally for me, I've looked into it a little bit. And at this time, I don't see the town of Whitman making what could be close to $100 million investment on running all their own lines for municipal internet and being able to profit off that or even break even, if you know any more of them.
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's certainly a big undertaking and it's certainly a large capital expense right up front. You know, in the past, I know from past experience I've had in negotiations with Comcast, in the past, when more people frankly did, were Comcast or, you know, whatever the case may be, Verizon clients, customers, that at times in the past, it was a little easier in negotiations to attempt to get some monies directly from them to, to, you know, work on increased broadband. I think those days are over. I pretty much know those days are over. Certainly, you know, we can have that conversation with the attorney, but I, you know, but, but then, as Selectman Lamatina said, there is a separate conversation about whether or not you'd want to set up a municipal light plant. But that is a huge undertaking with a lot of capital expenses.
I can see that maybe in a city. That's huge.
I think that it would be nice if we could somehow procure competition for Comcast. I think that competition usually generates better rates for everyone and better service. So I know in the, geez, it seems like forever we've had this discussion on town sites and everything about bringing in, you know, why did the Selectmen not bring in Verizon's? Because they didn't want to come here.
Right.
And they didn't want to make the investment. But there are a lot of companies now, you know, and I think a lot of people are cutting the cord anyway and they're just using the internet from these companies and they're streaming. So I think the internet is really the key linchpin to this whole operation.
I actually believe Braintree stopped offering cable and now they are only an internet municipal service.
I mean, that's, that's the future of entertainment and information is, is the internet and.
Yeah, but remember, in Comcast, in part of the bill, there's part of that money goes to our, our town cable site.
Yeah.
Right? And without that, we wouldn't have it. And they're very, they've done very well in our town in keeping the people informed. I'd hate to lose that.
And this is probably very premature as we get into the negotiations with this. I know, again, going back online, that you do see in, you've seen more and more, but recently, a lot of people posting services out here, services out there. No one's done it tonight. I know personally, I live in a neighborhood where I've had Comcast out several times and they just tell me the signal split too many times now, that the road going in now has streets off-shooting. Are those things that we're gonna look at possibly having addressed in this contract? And if so, maybe we could somehow find out a way of kind of centralizing the problems people are having with cable and internet service where we can get a good idea going into these.
Yeah, it's going on.
It's, it's definitely something we can address at the table with them, absolutely, you know, so, you know. And, and certainly if there are specific problems in specific neighborhoods that customers are experiencing, they're certainly welcome to reach out to me and we can channel that through the negotiations. Absolutely. Can't guarantee we'll have good, we'll, we'll, we'll be successful in them, but we can definitely bring it up and it's definitely appropriate at the table.
Well, just so people, I mean, at the end of the day, you want people to know that you're hearing these concerns and trying to do something about it.
Yeah, I think, you know, if there are specific instances where there's been, you know, ongoing issues, like I said, if any member of the public would like to reach out to me, either by phone or email, we can definitely make sure that's included in the negotiations. So 9/11, Chief Clancy and with the assistance of Chief Hamlin have, has put together a 9/11 commemoration on this coming Saturday to mark that tough day of the 20th anniversary. So that is going to be in the Whitman Town Park Lower Field, corner of Maple Avenue and Park Avenue this coming Saturday, September 11th at 6:00 p.m. He's put together a very nice commemoration ceremony. So certainly any members of the public are welcome. Social distancing and masks are strongly recommended or encouraged there, but it'll be an outside event. And, you know, certainly everyone's welcome there to commemorate that day. And I know, he just told me today, I didn't realize this, that the Legion is also planning an event at 8:00 a.m. on September 11th at the American Legion property. So just want to make sure that folks were aware of those two commemoration events.
Neither one of you chief wanted to talk about it all?
So the American Legion reached out to us the other day, including myself in the police department, to ask us to come over at 8:00 a.m. for a service there. And then we're going to relocate to the fire station to our 9/11 memorial up front, which will conclude the services at that time. And they're going to have everybody back to the post afterwards. That's a very nice offer from them to have us all there. I know we're gonna be presenting honor goods and we'll be there in the morning. And then as I approached the Town Administrator the other day, I wasn't 100% sure about the town park. But I thought it'd be a great way for the community, given the last year we've had. The reason for Maple Ave and Park Ave is I want to set up the ladder with the large flag and we have to be concerned about collapsing different areas. So we'll put it up there. We have a line, as Town Administrator said, we have some speakers coming, we have some activities planned. And we'll be there, we'll both be there, and you are all invited to join us for both of those events.
Now, are you, from the town park to the VFW, are you gonna walk there, like almost like marching down the street?
Actually, no, the, the Legion will relocate from out back just to the front of the fire station. And then the event at the park will just be at the park, at Maple Ave and that area. We've secured a sound system and we'll be there at 8, 6 o'clock, and then we'll conclude there and then we'll disperse from there as well.
And the only other piece I'd like to add is it's also the 10th anniversary for the dedication of the police station. So we've been in there for 10 years now. Time flies, I guess, but we commemorated it on that day as well and there's a commemorative plaque out front, so, you know, we're gonna be in that area, so come on over afterwards. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Chief. And new website?
Yes, I just want to make sure the board knew that this is moving along. We should have, if you recall, we went through some design questions and about what it's going to look like. Moving forward with that, those decisions and those categories of how, how it's going to look. And we should have a pretty good draft version of the website within three to five weeks. The, our website provider promises us, and then it'll sort of be a living document, you know, we, we know what the bones are. We can get it up and then build it from there. So I just, I think it's, it's exciting to have a more interactive and more useful website. So we're moving along on that.
Awesome.
I guess the biggest thing on the website is that it's easily worked with, seen as like myself.
My feedback was that it works on phones for people who don't, yeah.
There you go.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's, you know, we, we talked before about the biggest thing in my mind, and I know in Josh McNeil and our IT director's mind, too, I think, is to, is to make sure the categories are things that make sense to people. So, you know, how do I pay my taxes? How do I report an issue with my trash? How do I find out when the next XYZ board meeting is, rather than categories that maybe people don't really know what they mean? So, yeah.
That exhausts the agenda, I believe, right?
It does.
And anything else for us, Lincoln?
No, thank you.
Okay. That being said, any motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Thank you.